Okay, well, so go ahead and say. Call the August 2021 EST 350 Board of Education meeting to order. Welcome visitors. Any additions or changes?
I do have one we have to approve, no bids. So number eight on the business decisions.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move the board through the agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second and that we approve the agenda as presented. All those, or as amended, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A post same sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report. We don't have all the budget reports that we normally do just because we're starting up the year. Officially closed everything out yet.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second and that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A post same sign. Motion carried. Patron comments. All right, thank you. 2021 through 22 budget.
I just wanted to go over a few things on, on the budget. What goes into the budget? You know, the legislation affects things. From year to year, we look at expenses versus revenues and how we ended up the year. Did we overspend, underspend? Valuation, property values in the district cause our mill levy to fluctuate. Ours probably more than others because of the oil. That makes it pretty volatile. Enrollment, and then federal funds. There's some behind the scenes stuff with the tax collection stuff. Legislation, where we're at, we've seen some funding increases, which is a positive. We're going to see about $68,000 more in general stating this year, give or take depending on how many kids we have. We base that budget on last year's numbers or the prior year's numbers as far as head count. But then the enrollment waiting for how many kids we have that live in poverty or ride the bus or speak English as a second language, those things, those affect this current year. And then after this year, it's supposed to be tied to the Consumer Price Index as far as increasing our general stating. So where do we end up on our cash balance? This is still preliminary. We have to, you know, our auditor's going to have to go through some things. But we look at spendable, our operational cash, and then our capital outlay is separate, and then we have the non-spendable cash, things like our LOB. We can't spend that. That just helps us reduce the mill levy for the upcoming year. We're dependent on how much we can spend. So we always carry a bit of a balance there. So spendable cash, we're up about 26,000. That's a positive. COVID relief money has helped with that quite a bit. That was a concern with all that money we had to spend. Capital outlay is, is tough to gauge that as far as July 1 because a lot of our big expenses come in right around this time. Is it before July 1 or after July 1? So from year to year, we've got our budget there and we're in good shape. So overall, this is kind of what it, what it looks like as far as the spendable cash. We dropped and then we're back up to a more comfortable level where we need to be. Why wouldn't we spend all of that? Cash flow issues, we need to have money to start the year. If there would be anything come up as far as an emergency, we need to have some cushion there. So we're not quite at two months' worth of expenses. That's what's recommended for government entities as far as our operational cash. We're a little short of that, but we're still fairly comfortable. So our actual budget, I know it's hard to see up here, but you have it on page 27 on your, your device there. We have our expenses and then the amount of tax to be levied. So we levy 20 mils for the general fund. There's a statute or maximum for our LOB. We are at that maximum. Capital outlay, we're at the maximum there for eight mils. And so we have those three funds, and then we have a rec commission that we levy taxes for as well. That budget comes from them. They send us what they would like us to collect for them. We collect it. Their, their board makes decisions about that. The expenditures, one thing you'll notice, for instance, capital outlay, we budget way high. We're pretty much zeroing out the budget. We don't anticipate spending that, but we have to have authority to spend if we would need it. So we can't go back and say, well, we messed up. We want to spend more than that. So there's a big cushion. We don't anticipate spending all of that. Okay? So we have to have budget authority and we have to have the cash to spend it. You'll see a line here for transfers. Transfers show up as expenditures. For example, we transfer from our general fund to at-risk. We get all our stated in general fund. We need to spend our at-risk monies on things that, that help, help kids that are at risk of failing. So when we transfer that money, it shows up as an expense. So that's why it's basically double spending. It sort of comes out for a net. So pretty similar budget as, as in prior years. So again, this is kind of small to see on here, but this is page 28. It's important to look at the tax dollars that we levy from all of our patrons and the mill levy. A lot of times people just look at the mill levy, what's happening with my taxes. If your property value goes up and the mill levy stays the same, you're going to pay a little bit more in taxes. If your property value doesn't go up and the mill levy stays the same, your taxes are going to be pretty flat. So this year, it's looking like we're going to be right at 50.2 for total mill levy, which is down 1.6 mils. Taxes levied, we're up about 3%. And that is almost entirely due to valuation increase. Property value is one of about 8%. We also have some federal funds, a large influx of COVID monies that we've had last year and will have for the, the coming year, two years as well. One new thing we've discussed a little bit already is this revenue neutral rate situation. For the general fund, to levy the same level of dollars from our community, we would have to levy 18.4 mils. We can't do that because state statute says we have to levy 20 mils. We pass that on to them. So the only way we will ever not exceed this rate for the general fund is if our property values decline, which, which can happen. You also notice actual taxes levied last year, 856 for our LOB, 856,000. This year, we're levying 845,000. That seems less revenue than last year. It is, but it still exceeds the revenue neutral rate. So I can't explain that. I haven't had any questions about this. This hasn't been published yet, but it's going to get tricky when they, next year when they have to mail a letter to every patron in the district telling them that your school board is exceeding revenue neutral rate. And then we'll get calls about, wait, you're raising my taxes? No, actually taxes are going down. Milling is going down, but we have to tell you that, that we're collecting more dollars. So this will go in the paper like this. Both of these are separate publications. They'll just go in as one. We have to have separate hearings. So you'll notice that the revenue neutral rate hearing will be at our board meeting in September at seven o'clock. And then the budget hearing has to be separate, so we'll do that in 7:01. And I, but it's a different evening, and we'll continue on with our board meeting. So we'll probably get this in the paper next week. We've got plenty of time, but the paper hasn't been terribly reliable. And we've had the budget checked out from KSD. Alyssa, did I miss anything?
No.
Alyssa's done a lot of work on the budget. She's, if I have a heart attack or something, she can, she can do it next year. This COVID thing kills me. So as far as action, just, I just asked the board, if, if we have time to do it like, like we do this year, I'd ask that the board approve that for publication already is in the board paper. If in the end we want to adjust, we can adjust down. So recommendation would be to approve that for publication?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the budget for publication as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second and that the board approve the budget for publication as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A post same sign. Motion carried. All right, thank you. Board policy and updates.
KASB does a good job of making sure we're up to date on our policies. We just need to accept, accept them or amend them as needed. This is example of one that not everybody's going to do it like this, but they're giving us the option. So on our food service policy, adding a stipulation in here that we can offer remote meals to, you know, if we shut down for severe weather, or we have a snow day, and it's safe for everybody to come in and cook the food, we can provide meal service. I don't anticipate doing that. If it's not safe to get everybody to school, we're likely not going to ask food service folks to come in and have people drive to the school to get their food. So, and I would recommend all those policies except for that. Policy EE. Rest of them are pretty straightforward, legal stuff.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the board policy changes as presented except for policy EE.
Second. It's been moved in second and that the board approve the policy changes as presented except for policy EE. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A post same sign. Motion carried. All right, COVID protocols.
A short time ago, a month or two ago, we, we still had our COVID plan in place that we started last year when we had no idea what we were doing. I'm not sure that we still do. But, you know, we did what we thought we had to do, made our best choices, and we got through a tough year. We don't need to do things exactly like we did last year. We've learned a lot. So we repealed, though, that plan, anticipating a pretty normal start to the school year. I still am. Obviously, with cases increasing, it's becoming more and more of a concern. Two weeks ago, I was not very concerned at all. A week ago, I was more concerned. So I, I thought it was appropriate that at least we're on the same page with, things are going to change and we'll need to have a board meeting every time something needs to change. But there are some things that I think Mr. White and I, if we're going to make decisions, we need the board to be on the same page with us. So I've, I've laid out some of these things that maybe we can just make decisions on the fly. Other things the board should meet and take action, for example, masks. Today, right now, I do not anticipate requiring masks. They're optional. Wear them if you want. It is in federal regulations that all, everybody on a school bus wear a mask. We don't anticipate doing that either. But again, all of this may change. Crowd size limitations, if we have a ballgame, we're going to be rolling right along in our ballgames, concerts and those things. We do not anticipate day one limiting crowd sizes or requiring masks. If we have an extended school closure, you know, we may have a situation like we have with our food service where we're just going to have to make a decision on the fly. We can't get the board together 11:00 PM. So there might be situations, but if there were a situation where we've got to shut down for a week and we need to get together and talk about that. Testing, I don't plan to change our testing protocols. We're testing anybody that wants to. We have enough. We've got money provided. It's free. Alyssa's willing to do that. We've not been doing random testing. We've just been testing folks that have symptoms or have been exposed and want to know, do I have COVID? We've not been requiring random testing or do I anticipate doing that? Vaccinations, they're not required, staff or students. We want to encourage everybody to get one. There's enough. Religious objections or health objections, it's tough for us to manage with, with trying to mandate that. We'll encourage everybody to, but we also have to allow students to attend school. And children under 12 cannot be vaccinated. We're all comfortable with those things. These are kind of those major issues that would cause a lot of consternation among our public, our parents, families, staff, that if we're going to do those things, we really need to sit down and talk about it and we're going to make a change. Let's do it all together. Everybody comfortable with that as of today moving forward like that to start the school We anticipate bringing kids in for breakfast. We anticipate pretty much doing things like we did two years ago. We're going to bring kids into the gym. There's situations where we may need to keep people spread out. We're still going to keep those things in mind. Quarantines and exclusion from schools. To be clear, we cannot, as a school district, quarantine anybody. That comes from health officials. We can't do that. But we kind of use those terms, quarantine and exclusion from school interchangeably. We'll follow guidelines from our health department and/or the CDC. Current guidelines state that if you've been exposed six feet, 15 minutes, you're close contact, that's not anything new. You'd be excluded for 10 days as long as there's no symptoms. If you've been fully vaccinated or tested positive in the last three months, you do not need to quarantine unless there are symptoms. This is a situation that may, may come up. We have three students in class that were around somebody that are on the volleyball team. They rode the bus. They were all really close together. This kid tested positive for COVID. Two of these kids that were sitting right near that kid had been vaccinated. This kid is not. That kid has to quarantine the other two that are vaccinated and do not. Does that require any vaccines? Some people may look at it that way. This is not going away. We're going to be dealing with that all year. Close contacts and people that are symptomatic. It's already a board policy that if there's a contagious disease and you have it, we can exclude you from school. And we need to protect everybody else. Last year, we had the situation where we were trying to encourage masks. If masks work, then let's recognize that. We did change our policy to, to 90 minutes for close contact rule. That was if everybody was wearing masks. I don't think it's worth messing with that because unless it's a medical grade mask, because that only works, the cloth masks, if we're all wearing them. So we will follow guidelines there. If they change the guidelines, we will go with that. Remote learning, we will not offer that as just an option for families to keep their kid home and learn remotely. They can homeschool. They can enroll in a virtual school. It's not a good situation for our staff to try to do what we did last year. We made it through, but kids need to be in school. Teachers need to be focused on those kids in class. Now, if we do have a student that is excluded from school, is quarantined for an extended period of time, we're going to handle that like we would in a typical year that this kid had chicken pox and had to go home for a week. We'll send the work home and have time to make it up when, when they get back. And we are going to offer it as an option if Mrs. McAllister has it set up, where she can zoom real easy with that student, and it's not going to be a detriment to the entire class. And that family can do that as well. If there's a mutual agreement between the family and the teacher, great, let's do that. We're not going to get in the way of that. But what we don't want is a situation where now the teacher's stressing because I told that family that they need to have the kid log on, and they're not logging on, what are we going to do? We don't want that stress on our people and the families. Let's get through it, get back into the classroom. So we're going to kind of treat it like we would in a normal year. If that makes sense. So again, that'll be a mutual thing, this teacher, this family. If they can work it out, great. But it's not an expectation or requirement. We don't anticipate doing the daily temperature checks. We've still got thermometers in the rooms. Somebody's showing symptoms, they can, they can take the temperature right there, and they have situations where we need to do that. Obviously, in a normal year, we wouldn't send them to the nurse's office. We're not going to require all that. I don't know that we had a single, we had a couple of kids that were sick.
I don't think we had a positive case.
It wasn't COVID, but there was a couple that were caught. I think at the elementary, I don't know, but it was one day that we had entering the room, oh my, this kid has a fever, we need to go home. Socially distanced, we're going to do that as best we can. It's schedules, we don't anticipate altering those. We may need to. We may get to a point where we have to do that. We're not going to require hourly hand washing, but we are going to reinforce those things. It is still important. Visitors will kind of be as needed basis. I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to have to make a phone call the entire second grade class that, that a parent came and ate lunch and now we have to quarant, that parent tested positive and we have to quarantine the whole, the whole crew. So we'll be, still be careful about visitors. We, we want families involved, but we want to be careful about it. So allow it on a limited basis. We'll kind of make those decisions as we go. I know there's other things we're probably missing, but I wanted to make sure we're going, we're all on the same page with what, where we're headed here. Now, we may need to get together Wednesday night before school and change some of this. I hope not. Very nervous about it. We're comfortable with administering the discretion to make some of those decisions. And then those more important, more controversial things, we're probably going to need to get together as a board and talk about.
Josh, you make a change on your own side.
Yeah.
You have me this for everything. So visitors in the building, I mean, you say limited basis? Are you going to allow parents to go in and have lunch with their kids or some of that? Or what are you thinking there?
What we'll probably do is, we're going to discourage it. Coming for your kid's birthday and you can sit over here away from everybody else, something like that.
Okay. Still trying to spread out lunches and?
No.
Okay. So we'll have a music group again?
Yes, we'll have a music group again, but we served its intended purpose and it wasn't a situation where we had, the fourth grade had a positive case and thank God they were separate from everybody else. We never had that situation. Doesn't mean we won't this year, but we want to be as normal as possible. It's, it's been a trying time. Kids need to be here to school.
All right, thanks, Josh. Mower.
I would probably overdue for a mower. The big one that we have is in good shape. It's 11 years old, I think. I think they got it right before it came a year or so. Yeah, it's about 11 years old. It'll last for a while longer. This would be a similar mower. The John Deere that we have is probably 25, 30 years old. It's, it's served its purpose. We have a snow blower on that one, so we need a snow blower on this one. So we have a blade on one and a snow blower on the other one. Do we have to go with grasshopper? No, this is their government pricing here. We're pretty happy with the grasshopper we have. We know how to work on them and we have folks at buyers that, that can work on them and get parts. So I would anticipate this lasting this, 20 years. So this would put us where we have a bigger grasshopper that's got a six-foot deck and this is a, yeah, 2-inch deck. So it'd be nicer to have, that, that big one's tough to get around like in the playground and around the fence or in the practice field. It's nice to have a little bit smaller one. We're just going to use the big one for fields.
Is this deck out front or underneath?
I think it's out front.
Okay.
I don't know for sure. I didn't see it. Went by.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the purchase of the grasshopper mower for
Second. It's been moved in second and that the board approve the purchase of the grasshopper lawnmower All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A post same sign. Motion carried. Library budget.
This is just, I guess, a formality. Inter-local board is two folks from the city library board and then two of our board members. You two?
Me for sure.
So we've just done it by email the last few years because we all look at it. I'm comfortable with this. I'd recommend approving it as presented.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the 2021, 22 library budget as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second and that the board approve the 2021 through 22 library budget as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A post same sign. Motion carried. Special education assessments.
This is, I guess, kind of a formality. We really need to pay these, but it's good to have it on the agenda so we formally approve it. Increased about 3%. That's what it was, about 3%. Ours fluctuates a little bit depending on enrollment. You know, if our enrollment increases compared to other districts in the co-op, you know, our, our share could go up. So this is every district, so this column B is what we're looking at for our local assessment. That's what we pay from our general fund to especially in co-op for those services. This amount over here is what the state pays, the state aid flows through us. We deposit it in our funds and pay it to them. We deposit it in our funds and pay it to them. This is going to continue to increase. Why? Because they're, the state has they've tied their funding increases for general state aid to consumer price index. For special ed, they've just said X number of dollars is what we're increasing each year. Well, that, that isn't even a percent increase. That's not keeping up with inflation. So costs for special ed will continue to rise less than what the state is paying in state aid. So state statute requires 92% of excess cost being paid by the state. This year, it's less than 70% and it continues to go down.
Have you heard of any larger districts talking about lawsuits over that at some point?
The ongoing lawsuit, the Supreme Court actually approved of the increases set in law the way they are now. I want to say it's 75 million they're increasing each year, which is way less than inflation and the Supreme Court has approved of that. So lawsuit, we're not doing it good because it's already been litigated. So that's one of those hidden areas that I would keep asking for more and more money. Well, that's the reality of it. It's going to continue to go up. Our share is going to increase more than what the state's is.
For now, all buildings are on hold?
Yes. We anticipate a huge capital expense for the co-op. Right now, that's all kind of on the back burner. I'd recommend approving that.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the local special education assessment of $246,575 for the 2021-22 school year.
Second. It's been moved in second and that the board approved the local special education assessment of $246,575 for the 2021-22 school year. All those in favor, say aye. Post the same sign. Motion carried. Adult meal prices.
Some just got word from the state that we need to increase our adult meal prices. We need to cover all costs there. Why is the state concerned with that? Is the federal government concerned with that? Because they provide federal and state funding for meals. They don't want that funding to help subsidize meals for adults and visitors who pay for meals. So they set those rates. So we need to raise those. Breakfast needs to be $2.50 and the adult needs to be 4.75. Sorry, the lunch is 4.75, so. Yeah, 2.15, 4.75. Actually, the minimum is 4.60, but it's such a pain to deal with. $4.60 when you come through and pay, so it's easy. We can go on the quarter.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the change in adult guest meal prices to $2.50 for breakfast and $4.75.
It's been moved in second and that the board approve and change in adult guest meal prices to $2.50 for breakfast and $4.75 for lunch. All those in favor, say aye. Post the same sign. Motion carried. Milk bids.
We got two bids for milk. Do you have those with you?
Do I see them right now?
Apparently not. Do you remember, you know, write it down, did you?
Just know that we're on Cashway and not.
We got bids from Cashway and from Unreal Distributing. Cashway was 24 cents per unit. We had one was 29. And the chocolate mug's a little more expensive, but Cashway was cheaper on both of them.
That's who we had last year too.
And they're good to work with.
Out of curiosity, are we going to be in a bind with Cisco stopping distribution?
It's not going to help, but yeah, one of our distributors, they don't have enough people. They can't. They're not delivering to us anymore.
Wasn't sure how much we got from.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but we've got, this Cashway is one vendor to use and then Edco, I think, is another. So we've had three that regularly use.
Cisco's not one of our, it's not like the biggest one that we get a lot of lunch at. Edco and Cashway is a lot.
So I'd recommend approving a bid from Cashway for the milk sales.
We're still moved. It's been moved in second and that we approve the bid from Cashway Distribution for the milk for the coming school year. All those in favor, say aye. Post the same sign.
Just for the record, we're capable of looking at the milk bids in the office and determining which one is lowest. And we know that they have good service and we just give it to them. But we have to have this in the minutes that the board approved the bid for the milk for our federal program, so.
Is milk the only thing that the board has to approve the bid on the food side?
I think so, yeah.
Because we had a contract with the food vendors, you have to, we don't have like a contract that we sign that we are going to buy, just, you know. That's the difference.
Okay, just seemed kind of strange that there's only one single. All right, board member activities.
I don't have anything, but I do want to tip my hat to Josh and the staff for a very good newsletter. It was well informative and I appreciate that. It's a good newsletter to start the year.
Administrative. Mr. White.
Well, we started our online enrollment last week. Seems to be going pretty smooth for people. We've got a few folks called in, but I think we have tomorrow kind of designated for people that need to come in. We have some Chromebooks set up for them, so. But it's going pretty smooth. I haven't heard recently the percentage of our students that have actually enrolled. I know we've had some and we're finding out we're losing a few and we're gaining a few, so. As of now, I think it's going to be about a wash on the numbers, but we'll see. We didn't do it last year, but this year we're going to have our fall sports parent meeting. That'll be this Thursday evening at 6:30 just to kind of kick off the fall sports season so that the coaches can meet with parents and talk about expectations and make sure that they have their concussion protocols and their physicals. Make sure parents are aware that they need to have that done. Something new we're doing, we haven't done in the past, on the 18th, that's the evening before school starts, next Wednesday. We're going to do a seventh grade orientation where we invite the seventh graders and our parents to come in. Have some students show those kids around the building and kind of explain, you know, be there to answer questions and talk about what the process is. That's been a stressor for seventh graders and kind of a cause of some issues occasionally is that they're just at a high stress level even though we're in the same building and we do things, structure things differently. So give them an opportunity to meet all the teachers and sponsors and stuff, so. And we'll also invite new students to the district to come into that as well. Josh, Mr. Meyer can tell you a little bit more about this, but we've, gym floor's been redone. It's really nice. They did a really good job on it. Got done pretty quick and our greenhouse floor is in. We've just got a few more things to go there before we can start putting up putting up walls. So we should have that greenhouse going and ready for curriculum stuff soon. That's pretty exciting stuff. House project, be underway with that with three periods of class again with Mr. Moritz. Monday, week from today, they'll be digging and putting in the egress windows on the south side there. You can see a black hole over there and a bunch of people running around that are cutting holes in the wall and putting windows in. So that'll be a good, Adam's kind of been waiting on that to happen so he can finish up some of the insights. It's good they're going to get to that. One thing, kind of looking forward, sixth grade participation in sports. We've had that with the sports that KESHA allows us. There will be more discussion about sixth graders being able to participate in football. Not this year, but the next coming year. There's a proposal that was brought to KESHA and then it was pulled by the schools, by the league that proposed it because they knew it was going to fail. They're going to tweak it again to where it can be passed by classification instead of all the way across the board. People in 6A schools don't understand why anybody would need a sixth grader to play junior high football. But anyway, and they'll also probably add wrestling to that, which is kind of an on issue because they wrestle anyway. So, but the other thing, we haven't in the past, and I talked to Mr. Meyer and he thought maybe the board had approved it. We just hadn't done it, allowing sixth grade cheerleaders to participate. Probably going to have to really look at that next year particularly because next year's seventh graders have 25 boys and three girls. I'm not saying boys won't cheer, just traditionally they don't. So probably we'll want to maybe look at that if it's possible, possibly even this year after we get numbers and stuff figured out. But really look at allowing the sixth graders to cheer. As I checked with KESHA, it doesn't change the way anything can happen. They just recognize that this, well, they don't really say they're anything. It's kind of like basketball. We don't even have a place to enter physicals for sixth graders on KESHA's website. Anyway, that is the one thing coming up that I ask you to think about and if there's any opposition to it, let me know and discuss it. Any questions? Ready to go? Get it going.
All right, thank you.
But yeah, the greenhouse, Mr. White, you mentioned that. The Mansell, we're going to get that all, get that all poured. Did run into a snag with the gas line. Putting an enclosed structure over a gas line is a no-no. The concrete pad's fine, but once you enclose the structure, even though the gas line is ours, you know, on our property, it's still we cannot have an enclosed structure on it. So I think it was maybe two feet that the pad was over. So we had to have Davis come in and move that. Move, reroute that gas line. So that was an unexpected expense there. So we've been kind of held up on putting the sidewalk back in front where that greenhouse is and then I think Wednesday maybe we're going to try to, Mr. Del is going to round up some and try to, try to start erecting some of that. So we should have, should have all the concrete done and all the dirt work and everything done. Davis has got our plumbing put in, the water lines, the gas line for the heater and stuff in for the electrical and the drains. It just drains out into the, into the grass there. We're pretty close. We're getting there. Our professional development, working on some aims web testing, extending that up into the high school grades. Not been able to schedule that. We were hoping to get it scheduled here at the beginning of the year, but that's going to have to be a later thing. A lot of what we do, the first few days is all local. We just need to get this school year going. A lot of meetings and compliance training and those things. We are having a swim party, hot dog cookout for staff. We haven't done anything like that before. We usually do a year-end party for just staff members, but it'll be something fun, have all the all of the families come up, swim, eat a hot dog and hang out, relax before we get the year started. Sidewalks is one of those things, like a lot of things around town and in our school district on our campus. They need some work. It's just a matter of, we're going to devote those dollars. So the one thing that came up, Chris Mansell talked to me there, the city's looking at doing the curb along Broadway next spring, summer. Said that, that would be a good time to redo that sidewalk. The sidewalk itself along the street isn't terrible. It's not real even, but it's not, again, not terrible. That leading up to the auditorium entrance there is pretty bad. So looking at $25,000, $30,000 to do all of that along Broadway. I understand the city may have some grant funding that can help pay for some of that for business owners or homeowners that can help defray some of that cost, so. I bring that up just as, sometimes it's come up and it may be considered an add to our capital outlay plan. I did not order the bus yet. We did not get bids on that. We still need to replace that, that bus. Honestly, didn't know what was going to happen with our bus driver situation. If we were going to be, we want to get a new bus instead on the lot. So we do need it, so we'll expect to see that here in the next month or so. We need internet at the football field. There's not a good way to do it. They do have a wireless option. GPT's going to hook us up with a good rate there. We need that for our streaming. So they're going to get that going and just allow us to pay for the months that we need it, so. Don't need to pay for it all year round. We're just going to use it a few hours a year. And as for funding, I need to get those plans in place. We'll really hit that hard and come up with a more concrete plan there in the next probably two months. Get that all ironed out. See what direction we want to take from start, so. Just get the year started. That's where we're at. Pieces are falling into place. We never get everything done, but the staff shows up and the kids show up, we'll be off and running.
Thank you. Executive session.
Very little on executive session. I'd say five minutes ought to do it.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with
You and Mr. White.
Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included and we return to open session at 7:53 in this room.
Second. It's been moved in second and that the board go in the executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA. But Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included and we return to open session at 7:53 in this room. All those in favor, say aye. Post the same sign.
Just as a matter of formality, we never did approve resignation of Mr. Watts. I recommend approving his resignation.
It's been moved in second and that we approve the resignation of Mr. Watts. All those in favor, say aye. Post the same sign.
Same goes for Angie Webb.
It's been moved in second and that we approve the resignation of Angie Webb. All those in favor, say aye. Post the same sign.
I have a recommendation for library clerk hire. Recommend approving Carol Norton as library clerk.
It's been moved in second and that we approve Carol Norton as the library clerk. All those in favor, say aye. Post the same sign. Motion carried.
And I would recommend approving Matty Cole as the junior high cheer coach.
It's been moved in second and that we approve Matty Cole as the junior high cheer coach. All those in favor, say aye. Post the same sign. Post the same sign. Motion carried.
From our budget hearing and revenue mutual rate hearing, we've improved the budget. Still have a strategic planning issue. We'll take a look at the school facilities. Hopefully we'll have something on the greenhouse, maybe something on the house and see how it runs. What's going?
No one replied to my email about the annual convention, so I'm just assuming. No interest. It's in November.
Oh, schedule conflict. I have interest, but I have schedule conflict.
Did you hear that, man?
I'm not, I'm not completely out.
It said, okay, I'm not sure when the she closes. I was just looking on my phone.
Hotel's the issue.
I think.
The sooner we know, the more certain we're.
The rooms were, yeah, I think the, getting a motel rooms are more of an issue than getting registered. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Got plenty of time to decide whether you're going or not, probably.
I mean, if you think maybe you have any interest, we could go ahead and get a room. So just email me and let you, let me know.
Okay.
Cancel that up to?
Yeah. Yeah.
Somehow they don't, longer coming forward. Keep that in mind. I don't know where I should be.
Yes, you do.
Good thing they're overbooked.
Good drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.